Ladies and gentlemen, the microphones are on. The television cameras are rolling. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house this evening. We begin our council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask Battalion Chief Clark to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You may have seen Marissa talking to myself, the city attorney, and Mrs. Dawkins prior to the meeting. She is controlling the cameras and the audio in the back room back there. We have a unique situation this evening. Everyone located on the south side of the room on the dais cannot be seen. But you can't, but, but you can be heard. So, so we'd like you to double up on the chairs over here, please. No, just kidding. So, just, just so you know. So, but Chad, I think we can still see you.
Okay.
So, that's good.
That's good.
Our first order of business, folks, is to promote our good friend Chad Clark to Battalion Chief here in the city of Geneva for the city of Geneva's fire department. Mr. Clark, I invite you to come to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the only firefighter in Geneva's history who does not use a ladder truck. Would you like to introduce your cheering squad?
I would. Yes. I have my wife Beth, my daughter Reese, my daughter Kendall, my mother Virginia, my father Jerry, my mother-in-law Marilyn, my father-in-law Dan, my brother Adam.
Wow.
On this side I have my nephew, Kieran, and Caleb, and my sister-in-law Lauren, and my brother-in-law Joe, Kelly.
Fantastic.
All the Kellys.
Wow, fantastic.
And then I have a whole bunch of brothers and sisters in the back.
Indeed, you do. Where are the two ladies sitting at the park bench that didn't want to come in early? Oh, there they are. They're sitting in front of the old library, and I was like, "It's kind of creepy, Chad." It was like...
It gets a little sketchy out there sometimes.
It's a little sketchy. I said, "May I help you, ladies?" "Oh, no, we're just here for Chad." Oh, good. It's like, okay. So, I double locked my car. Welcome, ladies.
Honk the horn twice.
Honk the horn twice, man.
Good.
Battalion Chief Clark grew up in Geneseo, Illinois.
That is correct.
There's a long history between Geneva and Geneseo. Do you know that?
Yes. Deputy Chief Spencer retired, liked to inform me of that many times.
Yeah, because he played on that team.
Yes, he did.
That played Geneseo in football.
Yep.
And Geneseo won.
Uh, I thought, he always told it that, uh, I think Geneva won.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, he's not with us anymore, so...
No, no. I'll have to revisit that story with him next time I see him.
And Dean, do you remember? Was it Geneseo who won or Geneva?
Geneseo.
There you see, yeah. So, Spence is fibbing.
Maybe.
And, of course, some of the great coaches from Geneseo went on to coach at Augustana.
They did.
Yes, indeed. Attended Western Illinois and Illinois State Universities.
Yep.
Received a bachelor's degree.
Yes.
From ISU.
Yes. Emphasis in public administration.
Really?
I'm going to be a city manager, and decided that wasn't.
You saw the light?
No offense. Uh, no, my dad was a firefighter in Geneseo.
Oh, no kidding.
And fire chief.
Wow, thank you, sir.
So, I tended to follow in those footsteps.
Thank you for your service. After college, Chad enrolled in the EMT school and worked for Geneseo ambulance and medic in the Quad Cities as an EMT. Beautiful Quad Cities.
The beautiful Quad Cities.
Where were you located in the Quad Cities?
Uh, down along the river, Damport, Bettendorf.
Okay, so the Iowa side?
Yeah.
Nice.
Mm-hmm.
Took the Geneva Fire Department test in 1995.
Yep.
Do you remember how well you did?
Uh, I was actually second on the preliminary list and was, uh, got knocked down to third by retired Deputy Chief Lentz.
Oh, you're kidding? Is that right?
Yeah, yes.
Well, it's good he's gone.
Yeah. Well, it helped me out. It worked out in my benefit.
Wow.
Yeah.
And, of course, we just said farewell to Deputy Chief Lentz.
Yep, we did.
Wow. Hired on June 1st, 1996.
Yes. Long time ago.
So, I got to ask, you're, you're hanging out in the Quad Cities.
Mm-hmm.
And pops up this, "Hey, there's an opportunity in Geneva."
Mm-hmm.
Were you aware of Geneva? Did you...
I did not have any idea, to be honest with you.
No kidding.
A good friend of mine from college went to West Aurora.
Oh, okay.
High school.
Yeah.
And was from Aurora, and I call, I saw the ad. I said, "Hey, what's, you know, what's the deal with this suburb?" Because Des Plaines was originally supposed to be my first test.
Is that right?
And I was talked out of it. So, I...
By the people in Des Plaines?
Actually, people from Palatine, believe it or not.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah.
So, um, but no, yes, it was my first test.
Interesting.
And, uh, physical agility was over at Public Works. I can still remember Lieutenant Loomis there like it was yesterday.
And he's right behind you.
Yep.
I know.
So...
Loomis, you led the charge on the physical fitness test?
He was there. I don't know if he led the charge.
100%.
That's fantastic, man. We already, of course, had the pleasure of meeting Beth. Of course, your two daughters. Now, Kendall, you have a cool job.
I don't think so.
Graduated from the University of Kentucky and works at Gelledwen Windows and Doors in Charlotte, North Carolina.
Wow.
What high school do you attend?
College.
Class of 2018, I believe, correct? That's what you said, yeah. Reese, who's 19, she's a sophomore at Loyola University of Chicago and plays on the women's golf team. Kendall, you a golfer as well?
No.
Now, for those of you who might not be aware, Reese is an extraordinary golfer. Extraordinary. What's your handicap, Reese?
Uh, two or three.
Eh, two or three? And, uh, you have said this to me before.
Yeah.
That the talent for golf comes from mom, not from dad.
Yeah.
But the height from dad.
Yeah.
The taxicab to the golf course came from me, though.
It was fun to watch you compete for Geneva, and I know you're continuing to do well, so that's exciting. Majoring in finance.
Yep.
And has aspirations for attending law school. So, Chad, you've been with us 27 years.
Yep.
It's just incredible.
It is.
You remember the design team for the construction of the new headquarters fire station?
Yep.
In 2004?
Can't believe it.
Is that why the...
Uh-oh. Can't believe it's been that long.
Should I pause?
No. St. Charles.
Not St. Charles. Member of the first accreditation team, which is very important.
Mm-hmm.
Promoted to lieutenant a mere two years ago.
Yep.
I can remember that ceremony here, too.
Yeah.
Wow. So, tonight Battalion Chief.
Yes.
Pretty exciting, man.
Yes.
And you're succeeding your good friend, B.C. Lentz.
Yep.
That's pretty cool. So, 27 years. What, what, I, I know the obvious question is, gee, what's changed? But, so I'm not even going to ask that. What hasn't changed with respect to the fire service?
Oh, what hasn't changed? Uh, the camaraderie, I guess. Um, just the, the people and, uh, desire to serve the citizens, no matter if they're younger, been around, coming in. It's all different town, St. Charles, but they, everybody has the same.
Absolutely.
Same goals.
And you spend a lot of your time not just in Geneva because of the relationship we have with our...
Yeah.
Potavians, St. Charles, and elsewhere, so...
Yeah.
And some of the, the newer men and women who have joined us, what, what advice have you provided them, perhaps privately or otherwise, who look to you and think, "Good lord, man, 27 years"?
Uh, I don't know. I guess don't get too high, don't get too low. Going to be some good stuff, there's going to be plenty of bad stuff, and...
How do you deal with...
Don't be afraid to talk to people about it.
That's good.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you personally deal with the, the challenging days or events?
I mean, just move on, think about family, think about something else. But there's still things you never forget.
No, gosh, no. Gosh, not at all. And I know Beth, and I'm certain it's difficult on you as well, so thank you.
The testing process is probably more difficult on her.
Well, I think we have a commissioner, I think, I know Commissioner Augustine's here.
Yeah, he was here, yeah.
Ah, there he is. Yeah. We were together this morning, too.
Your words.
So, Mr. Clark.
Mm-hmm.
Do you fit on the bunks?
Yes.
You do?
Yes, I do.
You do?
Yes. I'm a side sleeper, so I don't usually sleep all the way six foot eight out.
So...
I know how detail-oriented you are.
Yeah, 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 sure, yeah, sure you do. This is why the chief prepared this stuff for me, for God's sake. Your dad was a firefighter and fire chief?
Mm-hmm.
Did you always want to pursue?
Oh, yeah.
Always?
Yes. I had ambulances, fire trucks on my birthday cakes when I was little. It was just always something that I thought was awesome.
So, you've achieved your dream, if you will?
Oh, yeah. Far exceeded it with this.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
And, and when is your birthday again?
Uh, September 23rd.
What other comments do you want to share with the community who's tuning in and the firefighters joining you and others?
I'm honored to be here.
Are you on shift?
Totally.
Are you on shift tomorrow?
Yes.
Now, I, I know technically you've been B.C.'ing.
Yeah.
The day after B.C. Lentz left.
Yes.
Or Deputy Chief Lentz left.
Yep, yep.
So, you're in command, life is good, you're, you're, you're finding the groove?
Yep. Working on it.
Yeah?
Yep. Started on a Sunday, so that was good.
And a quiet Sunday, right?
It was a quiet Sunday.
I know, we don't say that word in the fire service.
Right. And then Wednesday was meetings starting at 7 till noon, and then it was 4 o'clock before I knew what time it was.
Wow.
And it's a lot going on up there.
I bet it is.
Yeah.
Well, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And we're delighted to witness the promotion.
Thank you.
And I'd like to open it to the council if they have any comments for you as well. Alderperson Gilburg.
I caught a glimpse of something that you included in your, your hat.
Oh, upside down here?
Yeah. Would you be willing to share that with the, the audience?
I'd rather not.
Okay. I respect that. Thank you.
We got you, man. Anyone else? Well, thanks, Chad. Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
As we discussed prior to, we'd like you to invite whomever you would like to join you while we administer the oath.
Okay.
Okay.
My wife and my daughters.
And after the oath, we're going to have you sign this.
Okay.
And we need your social and your bank.
We're trying to have it somewhere.
Oh, you're going to face the crowd. You're going to face the wall. This isn't a, this isn't the police department. I'm going to hand you come this way. I kindly ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
Aye, say aye.
Aye, Chairman.
Having been promoted to the position of Battalion Chief.
I've been promoted to the position of County Chief.
In the city of Geneva.
The city of Geneva.
County of Kane, F.R. Sett.
County of Kane, F.R. Sett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
To swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The United Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The city of Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The city of Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Battalion Chief.
Faithfully discharge the duties of Battalion Chief.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, on, uh, November 10th, this is Reese's 20th birthday. We will hold the flag for you.
We have to make it official.
Okay, don't be...
Yes.
Battalion Chief Clark, if you find it inspired to leave, we understand.
Okay.
If you want to get out, maybe go have dinner.
Okay, sounds good.
And just charge the same bills.
Thank you.
And thank you all for being here to celebrate Battalion Chief Clark with us, so we're proud of you, we love you, we appreciate your service, okay?
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, item 3B is to proclaim November 26, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Geneva. Is there such a motion? Motion by Alderperson Swanson, seconded by Alderperson Mayor. All in favor of the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Fantastic. Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk can be considered in one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderperson Marx makes the motion, Alderperson Bowring makes the second. Yes.
I just was curious what the, uh, criteria is to put it on the consent agenda, given that one of the items was not unanimous, and, and just was wondering if that is one of the criteria to put on the consent agenda.
Uh, which item is that?
9C was not a unanimous decision two weeks ago.
Strictly, strictly an error. So, we will, without objection, I'm going to remove this out, and we'll take 9C in the order in which it will be discussed. So, thank you for referencing that. Any other scripters there? If not, Clerk Kellick, please take the role on the omnibus agenda with the amendment, of course.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda as amended has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item number 8, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills total $1,662,068.51. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount could be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in our council packets and on the city's website. Is there a second? There's a second by Alderperson Casarog. Clerk Kellick, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda as amended has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item number 8, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills total $1,662,068.51. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount could be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in our council packets and on the city's website. Is there a second? There's a second by Alderperson Casarog. Clerk Kellick, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero Alderpersons absent, the municipal bills have been approved for payment. Jumping to item 9C, approved resolution number 2023-112, authorizing execution of a professional service agreement with Interface Engineering for the study of utility-scale solar, storage, and carbon offsets in the amount of $139,250 bucks.
So moved.
Motion by Alderperson Bruno, seconded by Alderperson Bowring. Is there any additional information that needs to be presented for anyone here in the dais with regard to this matter? Yes, sir. Alderperson?
Two, two weeks ago, I believe, Alderman, Alderperson Marx asked if the consultant could come in today and address us. Is that going to happen or not?
Craig Burton and Tom Voltagio from Interface Engineering are here tonight. If anybody has any questions for them, they'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Superintendent. Does anyone have any questions for our guests this evening?
I guess the, the, I oppose this because I thought it was very expensive for Phase 1, what the deliverables were, so, and it was explained that more than just identifying the sites was part of Phase 1, so if they could explain what exactly the deliverables are for Phase 1, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, sure.
I think it was 40, 40-some thou, $45,000 for Phase 1.
Uh, $44,650 for Phase 1.
Welcome, gentlemen. Just kindly ask that you state your name and spell your last name for us so we capture it properly.
Sure. Good evening. Craig Burton, B-U-R-T-O-N.
Excellent.
And Tom Voltagio, V-S-N-V-I-C-R-O-L-T-A-G-I-O.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Okay. To address the gentleman's question regarding Phase 1 deliverables, um, as part of the scope of work that was prepared and presented to, uh, our contact with the city, um, the majority of the work during Phase 1 is engagement with, uh, the city and the utility department to understand, uh, all of the functioning of the utility system and the goals of the project. So, a report that summarizes all of that work, um, all of the, uh, goals and findings is really, uh, a necessary step in us delivering the further phases, Phase 2 and 3. So, while it may not constitute a large set of engineering documentation, it's necessary for us to complete the further analysis.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. Anyone else in the dais for our two guests? If not, I believe we are prepared to vote on this matter. The matter is 9C. The motion was offered by Alderperson Bruno, seconded by Alderperson Bowring. City clerk, whenever you're available, please take your role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Aye.
Item 9C has been approved by this council with a vote of 9 on the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 absent. Thank you, gentlemen, both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Superintendent. We jump to item ten, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item ten A is to consider resolution number 2023-115, authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for Old Kirk Water Main. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Alder Person Marks makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Person Bruno. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so for the council's consideration this evening is the certificate of completion for the Old Kirk Water Main. This allows for the letter of credit to be reduced to a fifteen percent amount to serve as a one-year warranty on the completed improvements. You may recall, this is the Water Main project that is over in unincorporated Kane County that was part of Waste Management's project, just to kind of refresh your memory. So that's all been completed, and so now we're just in the warranty phase. So if you have any questions, we do have Director Babica with us here this evening.
Questions from the dais for Director Babica? Seeing none, sensing none, expecting none. Clerk Kellick, please take the role on item ten A.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarac?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With ten votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, resolution number 2023-115 has been approved. Item ten B, consider ordinance number 2023-24, amending the East Gateway preliminary plan unit development for the property generally located at the southwest corner of Illinois Thirty-Eight and Kirk Road to allow gas stations as a special use and eliminate proposed street layout for parcels A through C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alder Person Casarac, and seconded by Alder Person Mayor. City Administrator Dawkins.
Okay, so an application was filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Geneva by Skylar Evans on behalf of QuickTrip requesting an amendment to the East Gateway planned unit development to allow gas stations as a permitted use for parcel B1 and to eliminate the proposed street layout for parcels A through C as detailed in the packet. At its meeting on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the PZC voted four to two to recommend approval of the requested amendment, subject to the modification that gas stations be considered a special use rather than the requested permitted use. We do have with us this evening the applicant Skylar Evans from J&amp;K Enterprises and also Director David DeGroot, if you have any additional questions.
To the council members, are there any questions for either the applicants or for Mr. DeGroot? City Clerk Kellick, when you're available, please take the role on item ten B.
Mayor?
Yes, forgive me.
I think there might be people, is it appropriate for anyone else to comment?
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
If there's no presentation requested, then we will just continue with the vote.
Okay. Casarac?
Aye.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Nay.
Pashke?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowery?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
The ayes are two, the nays are eight. No council members being absent. Item ten B has been denied by this council. Item ten C, consider resolution number 2023-116, authorizing execution of a consent release and indemnification agreement regarding termination of the Nataleini Trust. Is there a motion?
Second.
Mayor makes the motion, Pashke makes the second. Throw it over to City Administrator Dawkins.
Okay, so U.S. Bank, as trustee of a trust established to care for the Nataleini mausoleum at Oak Hill Cemetery contacted the city as they wanted to terminate the trust and transfer funds to the city to continue the care of the mausoleum. The Illinois Cemetery Act provides that any cemetery authority may accept any sum of money for the care of any mausoleum, market, or monument. And in addition, kind of the reality of this situation is, is that U.S. Bank has determined the trust will close whether or not the city accepts the funds, and therefore the city should have the funds so that they may be used more broadly for the care and upkeep of the entire cemetery. So they're not restricted solely to the mausoleum, but essentially what we've been told is that the trust fund, the taxes, and the administration fees are actually costing more than the value of the trust. So they are looking to divest the rest of the funds to the city for us to use in our, they would be restricted to the cemetery use, but not necessarily for the mausoleum. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and we also have Director Babica with us who will answer any other questions you might have.
Questions for City Administrator Dawkins or Director Babica? Floor is open. Alder Person Kilburg, then Alder Person Bruno?
I had a question in regard to the mausoleum, and its, its, its maintenance, do we, do we assume some maintenance level if there was defacing or if there was breakage? How, how do we treat someone, or how do we treat the mausoleum moving forward if in fact there would be a need to address some type of damage or vandalism?
Probably, to answer the question of vandalism is probably the easiest one to address first, after, of course, it's documented for the, by the police department. There's a number of avenues we can approach. There is a volunteer group that works predominantly on the West Side Cemetery, restoring monuments. They are trained by the State Historical Society in Monument Preservation. So that would be our first group that we would reach out to, to work with them to remove the vandalism. And in regards to the maintenance and upkeep of the mausoleum itself, it's my understanding that that's what these remaining funds are, are there for, that if it needs to be repaired or otherwise something happens where we have to do some maintenance work, that that's what these funds are dedicated for.
The donation of this trust to the city, our budget for the cemetery, what, what is our budget on an annual basis roughly? Is that about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars?
I don't have that information readily available.
So the size of the donation was a little over sixty thousand dollars.
Well, we don't know what the total amount will be, but that's what's in the trust right now, but they would take out any taxes, fees, et cetera, and then the remainder would be remitted.
Okay.
Are we just awaiting the cemetery budget? Okay.
The budget for this fiscal year is actually one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars.
That's twice what I thought.
But that's, but take sixty thousand out of that, because that's for some improvements that were planned for the cemetery.
Okay, so it was under a hundred thousand.
So really, if you take that out, it's roughly seventy thousand a year.
Okay.
So you're very close.
What were, what are the planned improvements?
I have that information right here in front of me.
That I can't answer, it's the columbarium.
Oh, okay.
Located at the side of the old cemetery office that has been removed.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I've been talking about that for a few years, so I appreciate that being in the, in the budget. Very good. That's all I had.
Alder Person, thank you, sir. Alder Person Bruno?
Does, does our maintenance, maintenance extend to the interior of mausoleum?
Although the mausoleum itself is private property, much like any other burial vault, so it's just the exterior.
Okay, thank you.
If not, City Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarac?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Thank you. With ten votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, item ten C, resolution number 2023-116, has been approved by this council. We jump to item eleven, folks, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening who wishes to address the council is certainly invited to do so? Yes. Pardon me? Yes. And just a reminder to all those joining us to provide public comment, when recognized, we kindly ask you to just share with us your name.
Yes.
Spelling of your last name, and provide your comments. This is a chance for the council to listen and for you to speak, so we will not be engaging in any sort of discussion or debate regarding whatever it is you share with us, so thank you for joining us.
Good, I'm, I'm glad you're not going to debate, because I just, I just have some questions to ask.
Sure.
You know that the Army-
May I trouble you for your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy Hayhurst, and I live at A twenty-seven North Geneva, right on thirty-one, we're right on the river.
Is that A-C-K-E-R-S? Acres?
Hayhurst.
Hay, oh, forgive me, I'm sorry.
H-A-Y, you asked me to spell it, H-A-Y-H-U-R-S-T. Hayhurst, like Elmhurst.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And so, we live on the river, and a number of citizens live on the river, but there are other citizens in our group that have a concern when the Army Corps came to present about the removal of the dam. In fact, they're talking about removing nine dams. So, we, we have a concern about this, started doing quite a bit of research on it, and so we know there are a lot of other groups that will have different feelings than us, but we wanted to share why we feel the way we do about keeping the dam, or if the dam were to need to be removed, perhaps just maybe some slight changes to the dam for the fish population if that was decided it was needed. So, we know that you're at the beginning phase of all of this, because the Army Corps hasn't even come back. Today was the date that they closed all the comments, so we're, we're just a, a group of people who have some concerns. We know it's a really big decision, and we'd like to just present this group of questions. We also have some comments that were presented to the Army Corps of Engineers that are, that show even more concern with the legality of some of the data that they're putting forth, and also some of the analysis that they have. But I, I have handouts which I will give you. All of my handouts have links. I've tested them all, they're all going to work, and I'm going to send it to your emails also. But you will have a paper copy, and then you'll have something that I'll send to your emails. So, we would like to come back at a later date and do a more formal presentation, but we felt like that was like too much at this time, because we're all at the beginning phase of this. So, I'll just go through our twenty-two questions to be answered before removing the Geneva Dam. Okay. First one, you don't need to write it down, because you're going to get it. So, if water quality overall is improving, which I have from the Fox River Study Group data, which you'll have a copy of that, would removing the dam make a difference? What model was used for prediction of the dissolved oxygen? Because there's a lot of details with that that usually aren't considered, especially for neophytes like myself, who's just beginning this research. We were told at the ACE meeting, the Army Corps of Engineer meeting, if dams were not removed, the cities could face costly repairs to our wastewater treatment facilities to meet new and more stringent EPA requirements. Does dam removal guarantee that we would meet the new EPA standards without further cost of taxpayers for our wastewater treatment plant? Isn't it possible that if we remove the dam, that if and when the EPA puts out new standards, we still might be required to meet them regardless? The Army Corps reports that there is a sixty-five to thirty-five share in cost to complete each of the three phases that they propose. Where is our portion coming from? We didn't get that information. The ACE reports a shallower, narrower river if the dam is removed. I have a reference to exactly where in the report you can find that statement. What happens to homeowner properties? There are at least a hundred and ten homeowners on the Fox in Geneva and several businesses, and I have a map and a link where you can see that. What host of problems will exist after dam removal, and who will address them? We didn't get that answer. How would taxes be configured for homeowners gaining land as a result of dam removal? Who owns it? If the exposed land doesn't belong to the property owners, who's responsible for the management and liability of said new land? Some estimates are twenty feet or more land and vegetation, which could be invasive. Who would own it? Who would manage it? Who will pay for its restoration so no invasive species populate? Recreation would totally change on the Fox in Geneva, and this is right from their report. Piers would need to be removed or retrofitted. Many natural pools would only be three to six feet, not allowing for motorcraft. How would this affect homeowners and those visitors who come to spend money in Geneva? How will it affect tax revenue and city finances if the market value of multiple riverfront properties is reduced due to having mud flats and a river width decrease of up to fifty percent? Not my numbers, up to fifty percent. Who will pay for the ecosystem restoration, which will take several years? Is the city aware that they will need to petition FEMA to redo our floodplain mapping so property owner insurance rates can be adjusted? Is the city aware that removing the dams will result in a negative effect to several endangered species such as eagles and ospreys? In fact, several wildlife protection statutes may be violated with dam removal. How will the city get around those issues? I, I have them listed for you at a link. Is the city aware that there is a high probability of another older dam in existence beneath the Fox River and about fifty feet north of the existing Geneva Dam? That was surprising to me, too. Has the ACE factored this cost into their proposal? Will that dam also be removed? There is a map, and there's a link for that. It may not exist, but the Fox River Study Group has said it very well could exist. Throughout the ACE report, the words "no anticipated or likely impact" is expected. If there are negative impacts, who will handle or pay for the fallout? Why is there no order to the dam removal? What happens if other dams are removed and ours is not? What happens if ours is removed and other dams are not? What will this mean for Geneva? Why is the ACE only accomplishing three out of their six goals? I included the video, and it's at twenty-six point zero six, which is in here. We are making widespread decisions based on twenty-year-old studies. Many of these studies are lacking in data. Don't we need much more information before we make a move to destroy properties and habitats that have developed since the dam was created? Most of the data in the ACE study is twenty years old or close to twenty years old. Should we make this impactful of a decision based on twenty-year-old data? Does it make sense to make a blanket decision for dam removal in nine communities without consideration of each community's needs? Question needs to be answered. Who benefits? Who pays? Geneva's water quality results by the Fox River Study Group, I have the water report below, shows the water results to be within a good level, with the exception of the dissolved oxygen level. The dissolved oxygen level varies according to the season. We also did not have hazardous toxic radioactive waste in our water. Would it behoove Geneva to investigate more before making this, this decision? Should we make a decision of this magnitude based on insufficient data, unanswered questions, and some outdated studies? While the Army Corps has produced successful projects, they have also produced unsuccessful project results. Examples, perhaps the most relevant at this time, is the Edmondson County, Kentucky, just this last year, there was a report talking about the ACE removing their dam, and now they are experiencing a critical condition to their drinking water. ACE admits they made a mistake, but are unable to fund the restoration or fix of the problem now created, and I've got two articles that explain that. It was also brought to Congress, and we actually have a video of that, that we'd like to come back later when we do a more full report to you. I have other articles to consider, they were involved in the Everglades, Katrina, and other things that Congress has complained about. The ACE proposal discusses cleanup at the site removal, that's a dam site. Who addresses the cleanup at other locations, like our property or Geneva businesses? Max McGraw had a specific recommendation for the Geneva Dam that proposed a Danil Fishway for the east end of the spillway. If dam removal is decided, because y'all, you are the ones who are going to make the decision, shouldn't alternatives be studied and considered before we totally just remove it? That's what happened in Edmond County in Kentucky, they just removed it, and then they had all these problems. I have another article, which someone else will speak about, where not only were there problems with the dam removal, but there was incredible pollution, because every dam is different. Low dams are different than high dams, small dams are different than big dams. And the very last question. Has the council considered that keeping the dam may avoid bigger problems with pollutants that the dam prevents from coating the remaining stream for extended periods, as this study clearly shows? I have a study that explains it. And removal of the Geneva Dam may very well decrease water quality in the Fox River. So, after you've had a chance to do more research, after the Army Corps does their report, we, we would like to come back. I'm going to give you this handout, but then I'm also going to give you a link to the National Environmental Protection Agency, that's a federal group, and comments that were sent in to the Army Corps of Engineer, not by me, but by another resident. And he has several different claims of the flaws in the actual presentation and the actual study that they've done so far, and changes that need to be made, made before any decisions are made. So, that, you can read on your own, there is a link in there, and I will pass these out to you. Thank you so much for listening and being patient.
Thank you. I'll continue on the south side of the room. Is there someone else in this area? Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name is John Mazur, M-A-Z-U-R, and I'm here pretty much on the same subject. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the Army Corps of Engineers. The influence of a low-head dam, like the one in Geneva, on water quality of an urban river system depends on the degree of urbanization and presence or absence of the reservoir behind the dam. This study that I've handed out compared a watershed in central Virginia that was split between an urbanized and a rural watershed. They find, found that the reservoir acted as a retention basin, and that removed pollutants and mitigated hydrological changes from the urbanized watershed. When the reservoir was temporarily drained due to a dam overtopping, the water quality at the confluence downstream worsened significantly, reflecting the degraded condition of the urbanized watershed. The Geneva portion of the Fox River system has been increasing in the degree of urbanization for hundreds of years. Urbanization of a system is caused by the creation of impervious surfaces, such as housing, roads, driveways, parking lots, factories, and warehouses. These surfaces increase the runoff and add pollutants and sediments. In order to decrease the pollutants and sediments, municipalities often require developers to create detention and retention ponds. Although the pool behind the dam is not frequently thought of as a retention pond, it does indeed function as one. The example given in the article showed that the water quality degradation is increased by urbanization, and the pool created by the dam decreased water quality degradation. Removal of the Geneva Dam will decrease water quality in the Fox River. We're not going back to an area where there is nothing but prairie around the river. We've got a lot of impervious surfaces, and we need a retention pond to clear that up. People don't normally think of it, but the Geneva Dam and the pool is an asset and a great retention pond. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, on the south side of the chamber, anyone else? Otherwise, we'll hop over to the north side of the chamber. Yes, come on up. Welcome back.
Good evening, everybody. It's me again.
Speaking close enough. Hi, I'm Bill Kehl. I'm a resident of Geneva, Illinois, at two-two-eight-zero Bloomfield Circle. My last name is spelled K-O-E-H-L, and pronounced kale like the vegetable. So, as I had said, I'll have to read from my script, otherwise I tend to like go long. My name is Bill Kehl, I'm a resident of Geneva, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County to invite you all to the- of Central Kane County to invite you all to the, and Geneva residents, to our educational program in St. Charles, held a week from Wednesday, November 15th, at 7:00 PM. The program's about the electric power, and will be focused on St. Charles and their IMA contracts. And you might wonder why we would extend a special invitation to residents of Geneva. Our electric agency is NIPA, not IMA. This will be of interest because we share geographic and cultural proximity. We also share ownership of the Prairie State Coal Plant. But most important, we are all municipal utilities. Of the over 250 communities in northeast Illinois, there are only six that are municipal utilities. How our local utility works is just different from everybody else, and I think all of our residents would benefit from learning more about what's involved. Of course, Geneva, we have long-term bonds and contracts that limit what we can do with our largest sources of electricity. Prairie State and Nextera. We also have Suddler's Hill and our Peaker Plant. But it'll be a while before we can make changes to any of those. What does need action is the development of awareness and concern among the residents of Geneva about coming energy transitions. Our council has made several excellent steps so far, making the GRC commitments, creating clear and positive initiatives for solar power and EVs, which was a week or two ago I saw, and excellent. I enjoyed that a lot. This is the work of the city council by the city council, but it's not from the city, at least not from the city residents. One example. Recently, a friend of mine was redoing their kitchen in preparation for a move out of state. They're all excited to install one of those new electric stoves. The real estate agent told them, "Don't do that. Nobody wants one of those." So I don't blame the real estate agent. They were just doing their job, telling it like it is. This is only one data point, but it's an important data point and a window into the larger community at this time. So what can council do? I suggest that in addition to pursuing the excellent GRC goals, we consider actively advocating that we become an electric city. We may not be able to change the source of our electrical power anytime soon, but we can support the move away from gasoline and natural gas. The current GRC document on our website says, "We're in early stages of developing a more comprehensive sustainability plan, so be sure to stay on the lookout for future updates." There is no date, and it doesn't say if it involves energy, but I know from the work that you've done so far, there's something happening somewhere. It just seems to remain a mystery sometimes. We've got to get more public with what we're doing. There may be some more information from results of the recent community engagement on Geneva 2025 Plan. And finally, soon, there'll be a Kane County Climate Action Plan based largely on the Climate Action Plan from the Chicago Region 2021. Something like that. It's been around for a year or two, and it's taken that long to come all the way back to here. So here we are, inviting the city council and all the residents of Geneva to come to the meeting a week from Wednesday at the Baker Center in St. Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Kehl.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Anyone else? If not, I'll transition to new business by the city council. The floor is open. If anyone has any new business to share with each other, the community? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Alderperson Marks makes that motion. All in favor of adjourning the city council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're going to turn the microphones off for a moment. We're going to switch seats and begin the Committee of the Whole Meeting in about a minute.
All right. We'll get started. I'd like to open tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. My name is Craig Maladra. I'm chairman tonight. I'm an alderman from the Fifth Ward. Responsibility I share with Alderperson Swanson. Let the record show, all committee members are present. I apologize for the late start. We were trying to figure out a camera issue and couldn't. Okay, so the south side is, won't be seen but will be heard. All right. Item two on the agenda. Approved Committee of the Whole Minutes from October 16th, and Special Committee of the Whole Minutes from October 23rd. Can I have a motion to approve? Alderperson Pashke, second by Alderperson Bowring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just checking. Any opposed? Moving on. Item 3A. Consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of Axon body-worn cameras, vehicle cameras, and supporting software at a cost not to exceed $4,703.34 over a five-year term utilizing the Sourcewell contract. Can I have a motion for this item, please?
So.
Alderperson Pashke and Alderperson Kehl. Do we have a presentation?
Yes. Brief statement. So the Illinois Safety Act amended the Law Enforcement Officer Body-Worn Camera Act to require municipalities with populations under 50,000 people to implement body-worn cameras for all law enforcement officers by 2025. The fiscal year '24 budget includes funds for the purchase of body-worn cameras, police vehicle cameras, and supporting software to satisfy this unfunded mandate. For the city council's consideration, is a recommendation to purchase the cameras, hardware, and software related to viewing, redaction, and storage of recordings from Axon using the Sourcewell contract at an annual cost of $83,114.04. And then again, that would be for a total not to exceed over five years of $404,703... So with us this evening, we do have Deputy Chief Dean, who can answer any additional questions you have, as well as Police Chief Masserelli, Sergeant Journey. So they're all here for your... Just fire away. Oh, wrong term, sorry.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Alderperson Pashke.
So I'm curious. I saw that the cost to add the use of the My90 application was about, was it $4,000 a year?
A little over that. It was $4,333, I think.
And that's the annual cost to add that?
Correct.
I know it's not budgeted for currently. I've seen what it does, and my sense is that for $4,000 for a year, if you guys are sending out paper surveys to people that you're serving, I feel like this would be an appropriate add in the future.
Yeah, it's certainly something that we can take into consideration. There were some things that were part of the service or the purchasing agreement that we're not getting, and that was done with the express purpose for, in future years, if we wanted to add that service on, those terms would have been agreed to already. So that is definitely something that we can look into.
How much time is currently spent putting together, sending out, and reading the paper surveys?
I don't know that.
I'm just wondering, like, for $4,000 a year to get actual data back, feels like it would be worthwhile, so I hope it can be considered in the future.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Alderperson Baruna.
Thank you. I'm reading this right, this five-year contract that is inclusive of hardware purchases with the cameras, not just the software.
Correct, yes.
So going forward, assuming cameras don't become outdated in five years, that annual cost would be less? If we're not buying hardware, just paying for software contracts?
Yeah, and this agreement is part of a bundle. So for the body cameras themselves, it includes a two-and-a-half-year refresh. So currently...
So this is a lease?
You could call it that. But at the end of the term, we would own the cameras, whatever we're holding on to. So right now, what's in the quotes are the AB3 models of the current cameras. They actually have a newer model, AB4. Those are at a higher cost, but in two-and-a-half years, we would get those, AB4, or whatever the latest model is, as part of this current agreement at the current cost.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Alderperson Bowring.
I just wanted to concur with Alderperson Pashke. I think if there's a way in future years to include the cost for the software to help with questions or, you know, responses from people that we're interacting with, I think that sounds really useful. I'd love to hear input from the department if there's thoughts otherwise, but yeah, I'd hope that we could find funding for that, because I would imagine if you look at staff time, it's almost certainly at least worth that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Alderperson Kehl.
This is a statement, and it needs to be implemented by 2025. How are other departments in the immediate area, how are they progressing on their implementation of this legislation? Maybe you have an idea. Do we have any neighboring communities that are currently on board with it?
Yeah, there are several. Batavia has a body-worn camera program, although they chose a different vendor. They've had theirs for several years now. The King County Sheriff's Office uses Axon. Aurora Police Department uses Axon. Elgin Police Department uses Axon. How they actually implemented it and paid for their program, I don't know. There are some potential funding available out there in terms of grants, either through the State of Illinois or the Department of Justice.
It is a sizable expenditure, and I think, you know, for the benefit of the public, I don't think we mentioned it's, we're talking about $400,000 over five years here. So, you know, it's a necessity, I think we've seen where this has proved to be very helpful. One last question. Obviously, this has become a big industry with legislation, state legislation across the nation as it relates to the move, as it relates to the move to body cameras. How many different companies solicited our business for this? I mean, it's probably more than one or two.
Right. I would say three or more at least. Using the Sourcewell contract, there was three primary vendors that they had identified, one of which was Axon. But kind of going back to your original question about other departments and kind of getting the feedback, they are the, kind of the industry standard in terms of the body-worn cameras.
Okay, so the feedback from those municipalities that have already embraced it and are using the equipment that we're looking to purchase, other responses have been positive?
Absolutely, yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, this is a sizable expenditure, so let's do a roll call, please.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Cusrod?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
All right, item passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3B. Consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of two X10 unmanned aerial systems at a cost not to exceed $58,654.12 from Skydio Inc. through a GSA contract. Could I have a motion, please? Okay, Alderperson Bowring and Marks.
Okay, so the fiscal year '24 budget allocated funds for the procurement of unmanned aerial systems, UAS. The use of a UAS will expand staff capabilities and increase efficiency and safety for existing tasks. A UAS can be deployed in support of search and rescue, site survey, infrastructure inspection, and other public safety utility applications. Staff reviewed and consulted with three vendors and determined that the Skydio X10 model would best serve the needs of the city, and the purchase is through a GSA contract and includes two units, one for Public Works and the other for the Police Department. With us this evening, we still have Deputy Chief Dean with us, along with our GIS Coordinator, Mike Bledsoe, if you have any additional questions.
All right. Any questions from the committee? Alderperson Kehl.
I'd like to know what the range is of the equipment that we're looking at.
In terms of flight range? If memory serves me correctly, I believe it's seven miles.
Oh, okay.
But with, without getting a beyond line-of-sight waiver from the FAA, we have to operate it within visual line of sight that's unaided without binoculars or any other equipment like that.
So then it's probably a mile?
It depends on how low you're flying, trees, something like that. But the intent with the drone that we're getting is to get a beyond line-of-sight waiver so that we can fly without immediate visual sight.
I see the information that we were provided that it was cited that with the Police Department, within just the last few weeks, that we could have used a drone on a couple of occasions, maybe, over the last two or three weeks?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct information, yeah.
That's all I had.
All right. Alderperson Swat.
Thank you. I would like to know what the range of drones cost. Instead of dipping our toe in this, we're going from zero drones to two, and $27,000 or $58,000 for two just seems like a very high number. So are there other drones available that would serve the same purpose for Public Works that aren't necessarily the Cadillac model that we're looking to invest in?
I would not consider what we're buying, the Cadillac model. There are drones that are more expensive. What I had initially budgeted was $60,000, and that was just for one drone. And the reason why it's so expensive is the thermal camera. To get a radiometric thermal camera from one of the vendors we were looking at was $18,000 on its own. That doesn't include the gimbal, the drone itself, any other sort of software. So the drone camera and all that is proposed is $18,000, I believe. And that's just for the one drone. There's some other software costs, services. So if, for whatever reason, the drone falls out of the sky, they'll replace it free of charge. And then if we do it two or three more times, they'll replace it for a small percentage. I believe it's 10%. There are other, more inexpensive drones that we could look at, but the reason why I did not was because those are manufactured by Chinese companies, and the Department of Defense has identified certain security issues with those manufacturers. I don't want to get into the details right now, because I don't want to misspeak, but I can certainly forward you information on that. And then another thing that this drone has that other drones don't is object avoidance. So it's very difficult for the pilot to run it into something. If you fly in a straight line and there's a building in the way, it'll either know to go above it, around it, or it'll just stop entirely and wait for pilot feedback. So there is a range of drones. The reason why it is so expensive is we are trying to get a radiometric thermal camera for our overhead electric utility inspections, as well as a quality color palette camera to do site surveying and other sort of inspections that doesn't require thermal.
So for right now, for those inspections, how are you conducting them?
That would be a question better suited for the Electric Superintendent. He can get into the details. Or Director Babica.
So the answer to that question is it depends. So if we're doing thermal analysis of our transformers, both at grade and above ground, we have to send two linemen out with thermal cameras that are about six years old, and they're rather bulky. They're kind of like an old VHS camera that you remember from the 80s. And they have to go through and physically stand and take the readings at a certain time of the day when it's cold outside, so they're getting the most accurate readings. And that's all part of stress detection for finding those hotspots. And that is rather labor-intensive, because it is two linemen out at a certain specific time of the day, at a very discreet time. One of the other aspects that these drones will utilize in the public works side, I'm not going to speak for the Police Department, is there are proposed requirements coming out in our new MPDS permit, which requires for outfall inspections on a monthly basis... out in our new MPDS permit, which requires for outfall inspections on a monthly basis. Currently, we're required to do those biannually, once in a dry condition and once in a wet condition. The permit's going to require that to be done on a monthly basis. That ties up one of the city engineers for five days to go out there and inspect all those outfalls. So when that permit kicks in, that means we're going to lose a city engineer without this drone for one out of every four weeks throughout the work year. With the drone, with the proposed route, GIS Coordinator, who is, and Mike has also not pointed out that both himself and our GIS Technician Cam Zabel, I've recently received their pilot wings for this type of application. And they'll be able to do those inspections on a daily basis. And more importantly, because it's through the high-definition camera that's tied into GPS, there will be a data log and an immediate data log. So if there is sedimentation bloom in the Fox River, we can document it right then and there and also provides proof to the Illinois EPA that we have documented those inspections. Some of the other things that we currently can't do, that we are simply incapable of without bringing in someone is, for example, roof inspections of the buildings. We get a number of, Pete's been knocking them out slowly, but we get what we refer to as water features inside the Public Works building specifically. And having a drone will allow us to be able to look for some of those trouble spots on the roof before they become water features. Water towers are another example. Currently, the only way to inspect a water tower is to hire a contractor to actually climb the tower and go up and down the tower and make those determinations. With the drone, if I remember correctly during the presentation, they can get about six feet away? Well, we're going to stay six feet away though, right? But with the high-def camera, we'll be able to make those analyses without endangering the drone or more importantly, a human contractor while they're climbing up and down these towers. So there's a number of aspects. And those are just like, you know, the low-hanging fruit applications that, that we'll be able to utilize for this. We'll also be able to document, for example, some of our construction projects. So when East State Street's under construction, we'll be able to provide daily or not daily, but perhaps maybe weekly or biweekly overflights of the construction site to be able to show to the public what's actually going on. It seems kind of redundant because people drive through it. Well, you drive through it all the time and you, all you see is 10 people working on this corner, putting in a piece of pipe, and then you come back tomorrow and they're the next house over. But when you see that as an overflight through the entire project, you start seeing all the work that's going on that sometimes isn't visible to the public guys. There's also going to be some community relations aspects that we'll be able to use that on. And then also, it'll be available for tourism shots, for economic development and community development, for, for future opportunities within the city. So those are just some of the very low-hanging fruit that we can address with this piece of equipment. And, you know, worst-case scenario is if, gosh forbid, we have a significant weather event, it'll aid in the damage assessment almost immediately with identifying where the storm track was and where the greatest need for the limited resources we have on hand to start resolving the situation. And I'll step away from the podium if you want to speak to the PD side.
In June of this year is when the Illinois compiled statutes were amended to allow more use, law enforcement use of drones. I think when we were approached by Public Works, immediately our first thought process was the amount of special events that, that we have, which is incorporated into that amendment to the compiled statutes. So to have that availability to review and see crowd sizes or potential threats that might be out there is, is a huge advantage in terms of what we do and how we would react during a special event, to allocate resources very similarly to what Director Babica said in some of the Public Works applications. In addition to that, as Alderman Kilburg had mentioned, the use of drones during missing persons cases is just demonstrated in two occasions just within the last week, where if we were to have had the immediate use of it, our intention would be to have pilots on majority of our shifts and have that readily available in the back of the squad car. So in the event of a missing person, in the event of a report that somebody is caught up in the boil or something like that, it can be deployed immediately to be able to give that oversight and then we can deploy either our resources or help identify things for the fire, fire department so they can deploy theirs as well. So the availability of it and, and having it readily handy is where we see the, the advantage of it in, in addition to the special events. Now, there are other law enforcement applications, however, those require search warrants and things like that if you're going to use it for criminal investigations type of purpose. But for where we envision it, we see for immediate application for search and rescue and/or missing persons and/or for the special events.
Okay. Thank you. Thank, thank both of you. The additional information was very useful.
All right. Did we have any other questions? Alderman Mayor?
I'm just ready to go.
Jumping the gun? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. I see in here you've, I was watching the, I had watched the video on, on this too. It looks like we also have the 3D scanning software as part of this contract.
Yes.
Do we envision, do we have a particular use we envision for that or?
We use it to 3D model substations, water towers, utility poles with transformers on them. Essentially, if you give it a boundary and tell it to 3D scan that area, it'll autonomously fly around using, using that obstacle avoidance and take hundreds of photos. And you'll have a 3D model and you can click on the model and bring up pictures. So there's a variety of uses for it.
Thanks.
Okay. No further questions? All right, let's do another roll call, please.
Aye, sorry. Sorry, didn't hear you. Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kusarad?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3C. Consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a development economic incentive agreement between the City of Geneva and Woodmont Tapville, Geneva LLC for 101-105-West State Street, Geneva, Illinois. I heard. Okay, Alderman Bowring, second.
Second.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to recognize Economic Development Director Kathleen Timoshenko. She has a slight presentation. I think if you use the mouse and point it at the screen instead of at the computer, it's already minimized. Yeah, there you go.
Awesome. Okay. Oops. Did not mean to do that. Let's go back. Okay. So, thank you. We'd like to talk about the Little Owl Building, right across the street from where we are. It is a very prominent building in the historic district at 101-5 State Street. So, we'd like to answer two questions tonight about this property. How did it get to be like this? How did we get a boarded-up building in our prominent area since 2021? And how do we reverse the situation and get this property back to active use? So the property was Little Owl for years and years and years. It's a significant property within the local historic district. It's contributing to our Geneva Central Historic District. It's listed in the National Register for Historic Places. It operated for many years and Flagstone was added at a later time. There was a fire that occurred in 1991. That was a pretty significant event, according to the Fire Department. And then the business closed in August of 2019. Pretty soon thereafter, after the closing of the business, the property was sold in September of 2019. And the new owner had the intention of building a second location for their very successful business in Elgin that's pictured there. It was recognized that the use that they were proposing was a more intensive use than the former bar and restaurant that was there for years. They started the interior demolition right in December of 2019. In 2020, they started to encounter some retrofitting challenges. Some of it was due to the fire damage that was uncovered during the demolition that was unexpected. And then another big event, the COVID pandemic, which really was a big deal for restaurants. And still, there's a lot of restaurant recovery that is not completed yet. So these two things and the challenges and the COVID pandemic, it slowed them down. But they were able to complete a significant amount of improvements to start to bring the property back from where it was. And because the costs were starting to add up, they were looking to defer some of the historic preservation matters to Phase Two. We worked in 2021 with the owner to try to vet some solutions to their retrofitting and to restart the construction because the construction was slowed and halted. One of the things that we needed to do was a regional electric upgrade. Because the fact that it was going from kind of a lesser intense use into a full-service restaurant with a lot of new state-of-the-art equipment, they, they did not have enough power. We worked with the Electric Division to create a solution for that, but we had nowhere to put a transformer. Things are really tight back there. We had to negotiate private property easements and we tried to bring the owners back to the table. We talked to them about a sales tax rebate because they were very concerned about the preservation things at the end of the project. We were all ready. We had this all packaged. We were coming October 2021 to City Council. And the owner decided that they were going to move in a different direction and they put the property on the market. The decision was really, my understanding of it, was really based on just, you know, understanding that the property was not going to be the right fit for their vision and their, their concept. So now they've got a lot invested in the property and they've got it pretty far advanced. And in November of 2022, it went under contract for, with a new business owner looking to do a Tapville social restaurant concept. This is a successful concept in, in other communities. And it's a lower intensity of a user. So that's really great because it's a better fit with the building. They don't need to do the electric upgrades. They don't need to do as much of an intensive build-out as before. So it's kind of right-sized for the space. They had some financing challenges which delayed the project from moving forward. They were successful in bringing a new investor to the property to look to purchase and fund renovations. The project team at first, they maintained a similar phased approach, looking to, you know, get the tenant in there, have the property start to produce income, and then come back and do some of the preservation work. The city worked to try to get them to rethink that because we really are very concerned about, you know, making sure that the landmark structure gets the attention that it needs to be successful as we go forward. Some of the front elevation features really needed to be addressed as part of the facade changes. And we're very happy that we have that attention now and we have the commitment to do those things. But of course, that has added a lot of costs to the project and there's more of a need for assistance. So some of these slides are from the Historic Preservation Meeting that happened in July. And these kind of showcase some of the issues that we're targeting to try to solve at the beginning of the project instead of deferring them to a later date. So I'll just go through these and, you know, you can see some have to do with the, this has to do with the central entryway. And you've got some structural and architectural features that need attention. You have these items that really need to be addressed before windows can be put in. You've got some masonry issues. Some deterioration, some patching that needs to be replaced, some window restoration work. If I'm going too fast, please let me know. So we have a commitment to address these things early on. So these pictures really speak for themselves about, you know, the need to address it. So how can we get to where we want to try to stop the deterioration and the disinvestment that we've seen in this structure? So the city has some ARPA funds that last strategic planning, not the one we just had Friday, but the one we had last year. There was a decision to dedicate some of that money toward downtown investment. And so we're suggesting that some of that be used for this property since it is such an important corner in the city. So the cost to do those front elevation restoration is $173,500 per the architect's estimate and also a contractor that worked to get his bids right. There was a little bit back and forth and, and they worked with us to make sure that everything was addressed. Historic tax credits will be pursued, which is an important component. And that provides a percentage, about 20% of those costs back in a tax credit. So because of that, we are, we are looking at the 80% number to couple that with the preservation tax credits for a grant in the amount of $138.8. This would be payable at occupancy. So these would be done in the first phase. And then we have the east elevation or the side along First Street or Route 31. And we have some work to do there. But those, we're going to defer to the second phase. And under the tax credit program, there's 24 months to complete those. So within 24 months, the owner is committing to get those done. The same type of breakdown we're looking at, that's about $189,000 of work. With the tax credit, assuming the 20%, we're looking at 80% a tax rebate in the amount of $151,200. We're proposing that we share 60% of the 1% of municipal tax. And then within the 24 months, that would be completed. So what does this look like? What are the private-public partnership shares? We have looked at all of the project costs that include the acquisition, the tenant build-out, the additional work that was not completed by the owner that has to be completed. We're at about $2,029,400. With our grant and sales tax rebate, it's about 13% of the project budget. So there's still a lot of private money as opposed to, to public funds. So why, why should we assist? Well, you know, economic vitality includes historic preservation. This is a key structure, key gateway historic structure adding to the city's image and brand. This is what, that's a beautiful picture in the, in the spring of the building. It is definitely a prominent, important building. We have a new owner willing to invest and retrofit and preserve the structure. And, you know, we're not talking a lot about the business, but the business is a really important component because without the business, no one... important component because without the business, no one would be here wanting to do this to the building. So the business is extremely important. It's the right-sized business. It's ready to go in, so we would have the reward of having the building preserved, reversing the decline and disinvestment, and reactivating the corner. It's a really important corner, and it's been dead for a while. So even though we're not investing into the building, we're proposing that, I mean, into the business, we're proposing that we invest into the building, and then we allow the business to help pay for the remainder of the improvements, and then we're getting this building out of its current condition of boarded up. So that is our proposal. The project team is here. If you have any questions for them, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right.
That is what we're proposing.
Do we have questions from the committee? Alderperson Bruno.
Not a question per se, but it's the type of investment that I look forward to in, you know, bringing that envelope, that gateway property back, making it viable for any tenant or any number of tenants. So I'm glad to see it on the table. Thanks.
Any other Alderperson, Bowery?
I'd like to concur with my counterpart. I'm very excited to see something coming in here from the business side, and I'm also really pleased to see this commitment to historic preservation, you know, which is something I think we ask of everyone in our historic district, and I think it's appropriate for the city to help ensure that that happens. But I'm really pleased to see that this potential new occupant is also going to be contributing to that, so very, very excited about this. Thank you.
All right. Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you. You mentioned early on that the previous owner was looking at an electrical upgrade. Did that go by the wayside? Is it not necessary for this application?
Yes, it is not necessary for this. End-user does not have the demand for the electric that is as intense, so we are not planning to do that.
Okay. And Phase Two of the renovation is the east side facing Route thirty-one. Is that a problem, deferring it for another two years?
We do not think so. There needs to be attention to it, but it is not as, it is not as interconnected as the front facade. So the front facade, if you put, we have to put windows in to have an occupant, and if you do not address some of those architectural features, you're putting windows in, and then you're, you know, it's kind of like pulling at the thread. How do you put the windows in without addressing these other features of the building that are holding the windows in? But the east side does not have, it has, it needs attention, but it is not as urgent. So this is why we've set it up this way, because we did want to keep the grant fund to as little as possible. We always try to give as little as possible, and then to create that incentive for the owner because the city is holding that money, and it's an incentive for them to come and finish the work. If they don't finish the work, they don't, they don't have access to the funds. So we, we're not worried about the deferral, and we believe we've created a good motivation to get it done, especially once the business is, you know, succeeding.
Okay. I'm happy with the concept. I think it would work well here. One of the things that I like to see in all of these agreements is a clawback provision, particularly for the grant, which we're saying is due to the, is due upon occupancy. That's the hundred thirty-eight thousand or whatever. In the event that they were to close down a month later, we're out that money. And they put the building up for sale, they've improved the building, the building is more valuable. So to me, it seems that it would make sense, and I'd like to hear the other Alderperson's thoughts on that, that we should at least ask them to stay in business for a period of time, and if they don't, part of that money is paid back to us. I believe we did that with the Caldwell Banker as well, just a ten-year sliding each year you're in business, you've accrued ten percent of it, you don't have to pay it back. So I would like to see that for the grant piece.
I can speak to why we didn't recommend that, if that would be helpful.
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We didn't recommend that because we are not investing in the business, we are investing in the structure, and the structure needs attention. And whether or not the business succeeds or not, we need to address this deteriorating I think that the clawback may interrupt the progress of the deal, it may not, but this is a very, very delicate deal. It's almost gone away a few times. We're actually here by the grace of a lifeline that the owner is throwing. So we have a very, you know, stretched deal. So that, we didn't recommend it, we didn't think it was necessary because we are still, we are not paying out until the work is done. We will have windows in here, we will have the facade renovation. Even if the business doesn't succeed, we still win. We do not have a situation like this. A lot of times, the clawbacks are used when you give money in advance, and then something doesn't occur to perform, and you need to claw it back. We will have met our performance. Our performance is not about the business, it's about getting the building reoccupied and re-tenanted. If the business doesn't succeed, another business will come along. Another business is coming into the pharmacy building. Another business will come along once it is improved. So I don't know why we would need to claw back the money that we did for the restoration when the restoration is done and we're benefiting from it, but that is, that's my position why I did not recommend a clawback. If we were giving money without, in advance of the work, then I would be more concerned, but we are not. We are not giving the money until the work is done, and we're benefiting from the work. So it's just different views.
I still think we're adding value to the building, and we're basing that on, we expect a life of this business, and that's the benefit. Yes, of course, we're, we want the building to look nice, we want to improve it. The point of it is, if they were to sell it one month later, we've added that value that they get to pocket. That's my point as to the requirement for staying in business for a period of time. I don't see it being a huge sticking point, that it would be derailing the agreement because it, hopefully, they believe they're going to be in business for ten years or five years or whatever the term. So I still think we should consider adding that for the grant piece. Thank you.
Okay. Alderperson Mayor.
I am super excited that this is coming. I think that the whole city is going to be pleased to hear that this is going to happen, and this is an important, maybe the most important building in our city streetscape. So I support the money that you've shown to dedicate to that preservation of the bricks and mortar that make up this building and the windows. I am concerned about the east facade, and I'm concerned that deferring it will also be disruptive to their business once they start. So I would be supportive of putting that money into Phase One and letting them do this job to do it right and get something open there. I think the building, the business that is in Naperville is going to be successful here in Geneva, where we have a very vibrant nightlife and community of outgoing people that like to go to new places. So I'm, I'm not in support of a clawback. I think that that might make financiers weary of the deal, and I think that we should go full force in with these people who've come to the table and give them what they need to get it done.
All right, thank you. Alderperson Basky.
I agree. I'm excited to see this, this work potentially getting done, and I see huge value to the city, and for that reason, I think a clawback doesn't make sense. And I may be the only one here that isn't familiar with this business, but would it be possible to get like a thirty-second preview of what the business is?
Sure, I think we should invite Mike Smith, he's the business owner, to talk to you about that.
Good evening, guys. Michael Smith, one oh one Chrissy Avenue, Geneva, Illinois. I'm a partner with Tapville Social on this project, resident of Geneva. Tapville is a self-poor, technology-forward concept, full restaurant, full brunch, lunch and dinner, but kind of an experiential dining. Looking to expand here in Geneva, so we're excited.
Sounds awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderperson Keller.
I had a question as it relates to the restoration. Obviously, you showed some photographs of what I call stabilization of the building. I guess when, when you get into a project like this, I think from past experience, you can discover a lot of things that can become very expensive. As far as the extent of the restoration, are we looking at a chemical or a sandblasting of the facade, cleaning it? And are we talking about new windows, existing windows stay? I'm just wondering if in fact the money that we're looking at here is going to be sufficient to really complete the project, and if in fact, all of a sudden, we get into it like we did with the previous owner, the cost becomes more and more challenging. Where do those resources come because of some of the challenges that we've had in putting the deal together initially? Again, I don't want to be pessimistic because I think it'd be great. I want to see something happen on that corner. I just don't want to get into it nine months, and then all of a sudden, we're back at the table here, and they need more help to complete what's been undertaken.
I, I understand the concern. I would say that this has been one of the longest and well-vetted projects. The interesting positive thing about this project is the architect has been with the project from the beginning. So the architect has worked with the current owner to, you know, design and identify and work through the challenges of their business, and then transferred that information to the new business owner. You know, one of the issues that has been tried and looked at a few times are some of those structural questions. The contract purchaser has paid for structural analysis and a deep dive into those components. They've worked very closely with the preservation planner to make sure that all of the proposed improvements comply with the standards for historic preservation that are generally accepted in the industry. The HPC has taken a deep dive into this project. I think that they've gone two or three times to HPC. So I think that there's a lot of attention on the details. Originally, before we brought this project forward, we had some cost estimates due to the preservation planner, Michael Lambert's diligence and commitment to trying to make sure that this was done right. We had an onsite meeting with the contractor. From that meeting, there were changes made, so I believe that this has been pretty well-vetted, and we feel confident to stand here today saying that we believe that this will get the job done. Now, you know, if something happens and we have to return, then you can roll the tape, and I'll, I'll be saying, did I say that? But we really are, we feel in a good position now with that, and, you know, of course, there's a lot of experts-
Okay.
-that have been, that have been-
No, I, you know, it's good to know that this has been a thorough investigation, and that we've had people that have worked with similar structures have developed estimates of what kind of costs are going to be involved. I guess my last question is, what is the status of the roof? Because the roof on this building probably could cost fifteen or twenty percent of the money that we're looking at, if in fact that needs to be replaced within the next few years. Is this, is the status of the roof at a point where we're not going to need to be looking at that, or they are not going to be needing to look at that over the next ten years? Because I know that's probably at least fifty thousand dollars to put a new roof on that structure.
I do not know the answer to that question. Mike?
Not specifically sure on the overall, you know, scope of work. We have had roof contractors come out and look at that. There is budgetary numbers for the roof improvements. There's some tuck pointing along the eastern wall, some capping. Again, the terms I'm not familiar with, but kind of rewrapping some of that roof so that, but we did have contractors go out, full building inspection, passed inspection, and the contractor believed that there was about five to seven years left on that roof, so.
Is it tar or membrane?
Membrane.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderperson Bowery.
I had a question. I'm not sure whether it's for the owner or for Kathleen. This point that Alderperson Mayor brought up about the phasing, is that a decision that was made by the owner-tenant or by the city? Would it be cumbersome for them to try to take on more of this work at one time from either a cost perspective or a labor perspective from their perspective, or is that something they might be interested in?
I know that they were looking to defer some of the front facade work to a later phase, and we worked, preservation planner Michael and I, worked to convince them to pull those items into the first phase. We didn't work to pull the other items into the first phase due to financial concerns. They also want to try to hurry up and get the tenant in as soon as possible. I would imagine that because they have a gap, to ask them to do that in Phase One would increase the gap. So if we were asking that, would we be looking to increase the grant amount? But I think we have a good program as we've laid it out. People, the architect, the owner, the HPC, the preservation planner are comfortable with it. So that's, that's why we're here today, because we, we came to this point where we believe that we've married the need with the financial costs.
Just some clarification for the board as well. The, the south facade, as Kathleen pointed out, a lot more work than the east wall. There's a lot of dollars allocated to the east wall, but most of it is tuck pointing. And to your question on sandblasting, and we can't do that based on historic standards, so it has to all be re-chipped out by hand, re-mortared by hand, regrooved in a certain beaded mortar joint that's compliant with the HPC.
Then sealed.
Yes.
Thank you. So I guess just to then come back to this question that Alderperson Swanson had put out there, I'm also not in favor of a clawback. I think that doesn't make sense in this, and probably many situations where the city is going into a public-private partnership. I think that's a, to me, it's a very zero-sum view. Like, we are getting our investment out of it, which is an improvement to the site. That's what the city is investing in, and that's what we're getting out regardless of the tenant or business that's occupying it. We're getting our value. So to try to get something back in addition, to me, is trying to count that twice, which I think makes us not a reliable partner for a business to want to enter into relationships with. And so I'm concerned that setting any kind of a precedent for that would actually be detrimental to trying to do this kind of economic development work, which I think is really valuable to the city and brings, you know, important businesses and, you know, I'm personally delighted for something to go in here. We've been sorry since twenty nineteen for it to be empty, but, you know, wherever, wherever the location is, I think the city benefits, the population benefits, visitors benefit, and we benefit from those, those tax dollars. So that's my perspective. Thank you.
Alderperson Gossar.
Thank you. Kathleen, would you mind putting on the slide that has the economic incentives and at closing in twenty-four months? So, I mean, just off the bat, this is a great, I'm glad they're here. I'm not trying to be negative, but I'm going to be a little bit for a second here. So- So, just devil's advocate, the grand 138, 800 payable at occupancy, is all that money pending requirements for occupancy? I know you said, like, we have to have windows for occupancy, obviously. But I'm saying, is any of that money for other upgrades that are not dependent on occupancy?
It won't be because the permit application is going to be submitted to the city. That will include this. It's going to be routed to HPC for approval. So, this will all be interconnected in the permit. So, we will not issue that occupancy until the permit items are completed. So, we will interconnect that as part of the permit process to make sure that we have these things done. Now, whether or not we decide to give, you know, a temporary occupancy for a month in advance of the completion, you know, that could be possible, but we will not pay out the money until the full occupancy.
So, we have, obviously, an itemized list of that through you, through their inspectors and contractors, and also through Michael Lambert?
Yes, it will be all part of there because they're submitting plans for permit and those plans are the code for that project.
Okay. Is that reflected in the draft agreement that we had in our packet tonight?
I will go back and make sure that, because we're still pending some legal comments from Attorney Radovich, but I will go back and make sure that it's very particular to full occupancy and it's clarified.
I think that would be fair and-
That's, I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, sort of a contingency and I'm fine. I wouldn't get upset with the timber. I want you guys in there and operating as soon as possible, so. And then, on the second part, though, I guess I understand that it has to be done in 24 months. But again, I apologize, guys. I'm not trying to be harsh on you, but what if they say we just aren't going to do it and we don't want your money?
I guess that there could be their prerogative, but I think if you're waiving money, come and get it, improve your building. You know, we have to, there has to be some trust in a partnership. And, you know, we are trying to create that commitment and trust. I don't know what other contingencies we can put on. We certainly wouldn't want to disrupt the business at all. So, I don't know what punitive action you could take.
I wouldn't want to call it punitive, but encouraging. Let's go on the positive side.
I don't know what you would be able to do to, I think we're trying to, you know, give them the carrot, not the stick. And the carrot is, here's the money, please improve the building.
Because I feel like our investment, the public part of the investment, is to restore the building to a somewhat, you know, I guess, acceptable for a given period of time. I'm sure Michael knows what that is and has some target on that. But I'm just a little nervous that, you know, what they think they're going to do, you know, we'll get started in here. Well, I mean, I'm a business owner too. I have plans on my building too. You push them off a year, oh, we'll get to that next year. And I realize they're going to lose the money in 24 months, so they lose that carrot. But now, we only have half the building done. Maybe what Alderman Mayor has said, and I do tend to agree with, is just to put it all on the front end and encourage them to do the whole restoration rather than putting it off for two years. Just throwing that out there. It seems to might, a little bit of hesitation seems to work well with her encouragement for them to get them done, the renovations done early. Those are my only comments. I don't want to be too negative. I'm excited about you guys being here. I have literally dozens of people that have asked me about it. When's it going to happen? They know about it from Naperville. They're excited for it to be here. So, thank you for investing in our community. Appreciate it.
So, can I go before I recognize anybody for a second time? Regarding your last question, the only thing I want to point out is that Phase One, we're attempting to improve the southern facade. So, when that's done and when the building's occupied, the city will provide the grant. If they decide then not to pursue the eastern wall and they walk, there is no rebate happening, so we're out nothing. We got exactly what we paid for. We got the southern facade improved. I don't believe that the work that needs to be done on the eastern wall affects the ability to operate or occupy the building. I believe it's, I'll call it cosmetic instead of structural. And for that reason, it can be delayed, not done, wait.
I'm just getting ready.
Okay, just getting ready. I did have a question just out of curiosity, though. And maybe you can answer this or Mike. Regarding the electric upgrades, what is it? I mean, they're going to be a very tech-heavy business, which, as far as I can tell, eats electricity. What is different about what they do from what the previous owner did? What was the previous owner doing that required the upgrades?
Pizza ovens, you know, state-of-the-art new dishwashing, new electronics. So, it was just a matter of, you know, the electric division looking at the items that they were looking to put into the building, looking at the amps needed and not being able to service. We have vetted this question because we keep saying, "Are you sure? Are you sure?" You know, they've vetted the question with their equipment and what they're planning to do is the build-out. It's a less intensive use. It doesn't have as full of a menu. It doesn't have the fullness that Old Republic had as far as the offerings.
Yeah, I was just curious. As soon as you threw, I didn't know so much about pizza ovens, but dishwashers. You threw out a lot of electric-heavy appliances, so I get that. My last comment is regarding the clawback. As far as I'm concerned, if they leave and the building sells for a lot more than they paid for it, that just means we were that much more successful. The building as it sits now, nobody's interested in except for these guys. But the building that sells for a profit when they leave is a building that's in demand, which is very different than what we have right now. And that just proves the success of our investment. Okay, I'm sorry. Alderperson Mayor? Oh, Jesus, okay. Bruno first. Oh, no, sorry, Mike, you've been- Yeah.
It's my first. I like the concept. I like it a lot. I'm not in favor of putting all the money up front because the second phase is a sales tax rebate, not a grant. Totally different. It sounds like, you know, this has had a lot of negotiation going back and forth and trying to have them come up with more money out of pocket right away may make this fall apart. I like the idea, but in this case, I don't see the east side. I think, again, like Alderperson Maladra said, it's probably a little bit more cosmetic than it is to get that, front of that building up and going and working. I usually like clawbacks, but I think in this case, it might make a little sense after listening to all the discussion that it makes sense, at least with the front part, to let it go and not worry about that. We also have a citizen of Geneva really getting involved heavily in this, which sometimes we don't have, which leads me more for a clawback than it is with a citizen here. So, you know, I like what I see and I would leave everything the way it is rather than rocking the boat a little bit at this point.
Thank you. She's second time as well. Oh, wait, Mike, sorry. I'm just kidding.
I am comfortable with everything you've negotiated. Just for clarity, the east side would be funded through sales tax rebate? Or would there be another grant?
No, it would be solely the sales tax rebate.
Okay. Oh, in that case, that answers that question. So, not upgrading the electric. Are we having an opportunity lost possibly? Will electrical conduits be changed? Maybe we're not bringing more amperage to the property. But should we decide to do a regional upgrade for that block for another tenant? Is anything we're doing now going to cause problems that we have to, like, dig up the whole place again? Or is it just a matter of a transformer?
What was planned was a new transformer and we were trying to get some underground wires, but we were unsuccessful in getting one of the property owners to allow the underground work. So, electric was planning an overhead wire. So, I think that if there was a demand, we would have to revisit the easement, but it wasn't going to be without cost. We had to pay the property owner for the land. And, you know, because we don't need it now, we're not going to do it. And that's kind of how electric operates. The demand is met. You know, they're not, I don't think that they're going to bring the improvement without the demand. We are planning some other regional upgrades, one on Third Street near Cocoon and Dan McFadden's property because the demand is overwhelming the system. So, the electric division does look at regional improvements as the demand is there. So, limited resources being what they are. Because we don't need it, we're not recommending that we do it.
Well, I'm comfortable with what you presented. I'm excited to welcome a new tenant. And, yeah, that's it. Thanks. Thank you. Paul, the person Mayor.
So, in regards to the east wall, it's just, so this is the limestone, the river limestone facade that it's also quite prominent. The roofing detail that you described going up the parapet wall, is that part of Phase One to fix that? Well, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just, like, I see over time that there's some staining at the top of the wall that's coming down and I worry that there is a condition there that is causing problems to the wall. And the rest of it is mostly cosmetic, although the hardness of the mortar is causing the limestone to fall off as well. So, it is kind of a long-term problem that needs to be solved more than just should be solved because of the looks?
To my knowledge, I don't believe any roofing repair is actually incorporated into the Phase One budget. I think all the roofing cost is on the cost of the owner and tenant. So, but I do believe there is budgetary dollars in there to fix the cap on the eastern wall and also clean up the masonry. There will be cleaning up of the entire building, other than just re-tuck pointing and other things necessary.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm all for this, then.
All right, Alderperson Kelber.
One thing that we didn't touch on was the second story. And I don't know, obviously, there's no occupancy there now. Oh, there are?
Yes.
Okay.
There's tenants that live in the apartments.
What, are there two apartments?
I think there's four.
Right, Jay?
Four apartments?
Four, yeah.
Okay, so that's a revenue generator and will help the whole project cash flow somewhat. So, I know that that was an important piece of the Country Village Meets proposal that we reviewed a few years ago. So, yeah, are you planning on making any improvements with those apartments? Or, I don't know what the status is, but are they at a point where-
The first-
They could generate more rent with improvements?
The owner did improvements. The current owner has done some improvements. I know that-
Do you want to speak to that, Jay, a little?
Sure. Good evening, thanks for everyone's time. Jayce Murray, Murray Commercial, representing the sellers. The four apartments, actually, the Arbizonis did a good amount of work years ago.
Okay.
So, they're all in great condition, I'd say. And I think there's room for, there's always room for improvement. I think they're all in very good shape. With a little more tweaking, I think, without doubt, that could increase the revenue there as well.
So, are all four currently rented?
Never had a vacancy.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've finished with questions. Let's do a roll call on this one.
All right. Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Hate to do it, but I got to say nay.
All right, item passes nine to one. We got item 3D, draft ordinance for estimated 2023 taxes. Oh, I'm sorry. Second. Thank you. Bowery and Marx saving.
Okay. So, the Illinois State statute requires that the city approve a levy estimate at least 20 days prior to adoption and to file tax levies no later than the last Tuesday in December. So, this year, that would be December 30th, 2023. So, for the committee of the whole's consideration is an estimated levy of $6,345,145. This estimated levy was calculated using the 5%, the maximum under the PTL law, and the estimated value of new growth at 0.43%. Upon recommendation for approval, the final levy would come back to the city council for a public hearing on December 4th. The actual final rate is determined by the county and can and likely will be lower, but in no case can it be higher than the recommended estimate. So, for all properties, with this recommendation, the tax rate would actually decrease from 0.519033 to 0.510307 or 1.68%. You've probably noticed in the packet, there were some, a lot of information. There were also, we do some scenarios of what it looks like for a $350,000 home and a $450,000 home. So, again, this is just an estimate. We don't actually know what the actual levy will be, but what you want to do is make the estimate. You know, you want to be able to capture as much of the growth and as much that you can because the county can always lower it, but they can't increase it. So, if you have any additional questions, we do have Finance Director Cruz with us this evening. And I'm sure she would love to share all that she knows.
All right, do we have any questions? Seeing none, hearing none. I guess we'll do a roll call on this as well.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
All right, item passes. Item 3E, draft ordinance amending Title IV Business and License Regulations, Chapter II Liquor Control of the Geneva City Code. I have a motion for this. So moved. Alderperson Marx, second. Alderperson Bowery.
Okay, so this really, this evening, all we're bringing forward is somewhat housekeeping. You may recall several months, I don't know if it's been several months, time flies very quickly. But we come to the council often asking to add a liquor license every time there's a new business that needs a liquor license. So, the question was asked whether or not we could just eliminate those because some have limits in the code and some didn't. So, that's what this ordinance is doing. It's doing that, for one, so that it would make issuing the licenses more administrative. While we're at it, we're also recommending that we update the hours to sell at retail for consumption off-premise between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on any day. Currently, we have different sales on Sundays, different sales Monday through Friday. This does come at the request of-
of one of our retailers, because there's a couple holidays this year that fall on a Sunday. Also, when I was doing some research, Batavia and St. Charles, they don't have those differentiations, and so in order to remain competitive with our neighbors, I think it's a good move. And then lastly, the law changed on to-go mixed cocktail, beer or wine. There was a sunset provision that originally was going to expire on January 3rd of 2024. That's been extended until August 1st of 2028. So we're recommending, obviously, that that language be changed, and we've added language that says that it would extend until August 1st, 2028, unless otherwise extended by the state of Illinois. So if the state of Illinois decides to extend it longer, you don't have to rush to update your code. It would already be in effect. So those are the three changes that we're looking at with tonight's recommendation. I will tell you, there's a lot of other cleanup that needs to happen with the liquor code, so we're trying to, like, take it piecemeal and take the low-hanging fruit first, and then some of the... Tackle some of the more difficult questions as we have time and as time permits. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
All right. Do we have questions? Father President Kelber.
We eliminated all the caps on certain licenses, right?
Correct.
Essentially, I see we struck all those. Were we at a point where we had exceeded some of those along the way?
Some of them we exceed every time. So some of them, any time we get a new business that wants a particular license, if that license had a cap, typically...
We bumped it.
We would have to come to the council to ask to bump it up. And so that's what we're trying to eliminate, is just some of that for real. And there was no real rhyme or reason that I could find why some licenses had a cap and some did not.
Thank you.
All right. Father President Kozra.
I just want to say, I enjoy that part. I know it's annoying for the applicants. It's probably annoying for staff, but I enjoy hearing, especially the new businesses, is what, you know? I don't really care if we... I don't even know all of them, but one business is just going from this to that or whatever. But it's the new businesses that I like to hear about, and I like them to have an opportunity to share this in the council with us, so we can spread the word. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I get all the efficiencies for everybody involved, but I'll miss it, so.
And I would note, it wasn't all licenses, so you weren't actually capturing every new license or every new business. It was only certain ones. But certainly, I know that Kathleen, on the Economic Development webpage, always highlights our new businesses, and so they're always... You know, I'm sure we can always invite them to come to a meeting just to say hi.
I think that sounds great.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Roll call.
All right. Marks?
Hi.
Mayor?
Hi.
Pashki?
Hi.
Swanson?
Hi.
Bowery?
Hi.
Bruno?
Hi.
Ruby?
Hi.
Kilberg?
Hi.
Kasarag?
Hi.
Maladra?
Hi.
All right, folks, that brings us to item four on the agenda, public comment. I see no members of the public. Item five, new business. Any member of the committee have any new business they want to bring up? Nope. All right. Item six, closed session on the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. I have a motion going to closed session, a second from Swanson. All in... Do we have to do it?
Now you have to do a roll.
Now I have to do a roll.
For the one time.
All right, roll call.
Okay, here we go. Bowery?
Hi.
Bruno?
Hi.
Ruby?
Hi.
Kilberg?
Hi.
Kasarag?
Hi.
Maladra?
Hi.
Marks?
Hi.
Mayor?
Hi.
Pashki?
Hi.
Swanson?
Hi.
All right, we will be going into closed session. There will be no action taken after this closed session. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn for... Kasarag?
Turned into a punk.
All in favor of motion to adjourn?
Hi.
Thank you very much.